Bellingham Planning Board Meeting. For those people that are here for Prospect Hill Estates. You know, they have requested a continuation. And they've requested continuation to our meeting on March 24. For those of you that are here in attendance for that, I appreciate you showing up. I apologize, this is a continuation. In time. But I just thought I'll let you know it will be continuation.
Bill, could we have a motion? Could we have a motion, Bill? Do you mind to open that hearing and then to continue it to the date? Of March 24?
I don't care. Open the public discussion on Prospect Hill Estates.
I'll move to continue the hearing until. I forget the date already.
March 24th. It's March 24th.
Do we have to open the discussion first?
Yeah, we want to open. We can just open it and then we want to just make a motion to continue it to March 24.
So technically, Brian, we're going to need a motion to open the discussion for Prospect Hill. Do I have a second?
My second that.
All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
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 We will also need a motion for continuation that they have requested to 24th, 2022.
I will.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of a continuation to March 24th, 2022? Please signify by saying aye.
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 For those people that again, were on here, thank you for your participation. By showing up on. Fourth, if you have any questions in the interim, please contact the planning office.
So I guess I can't. I can't ask a question then because it's already been tabled. So because my question was just, you know, I was at the meeting last month. This is Bonnie Wheeler from Lake Street. I was at this meeting, you know, I zoomed in last month and it was tabled to this month. But it's, I'm just wondering, you know, they're, they're working there. They put in wells and everything. So it seems like it's going forward.
Jim, I don't believe they've put in wells.
Yeah, there are. There are. I can send you pictures. There's wells there.
Chairman, if I may. So.
Jim.
Yep. So separate and distinct from this project, there is. I want to say six single family homes, maybe seven. I can check on that. That front on Prospect Street in Franklin.
Yes.
And, and he has received building permits from the town of Franklin for those. That is separate from this project.
Okay, perfect. Yes, because I think you're right. I think they are down further towards the Franklin line. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry if I spoke out.
That's separate and distinct. He can, he cannot do anything until we move forward. He has some done some clearing there to do, I believe, test pits. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes, in the rear of that lot where you see some trails going back, those are test pits and soils evaluation. But he's not, yes, as the chairman said, he's not allowed to build anything at this time back there. But there are, there are lots up front on Prospect.
Okay, thank you.
And that's separate and distinct from this. Also, just to let you know, we are being concert with the Conservation Commission on a track. That's, that is our objective. And I want to thank you for being aware of what's going on down there and thank you for showing up.
Thank you.
It's certainly appreciated. And I would continue. Please come back in a month.
I most certainly will. It's already, I already wrote it down. I'll put it on my calendar.
I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim, I'd like to move on. On the discussion on 353 Maple. I need in my motion to continue the public hearing on 353 Maple Street.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to continue the public hearing on 355 Maple Street. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Can you bring us up to date? It looks like they've requested a continuation.
The applicant has requested continuation to a date certain. And so the date certain would be March 24.
We have a request by the applicant to continue until March 24. I would entertain a motion. Relation to March 24 from the board.
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor for continuation of 353 Maple Street to March 24. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. I'd like to jump around for one moment to business. The approval of minutes. Have we all had a chance to look at the minutes? I would need a motion to accept the minutes as written.
So.
Do I have a second to a second motion?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that has been made and seconded. From our February 10th meeting. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining. That motion passes unanimously.
I just wanted to thank Amy for doing those. She did a great job and she got them right back to us right away. So thank you to Amy for doing that.
Please let her know. She did a great job. As I texted you earlier. The next item is a motion for the public hearing on 206 Mechanic Street.
A motion to open the hearing for 206 Mechanic Street?
Correct.
To open, yes. Motion to open the hearing?
I think it, I think the hearing is already open.
Right. So, so just so everyone remembers, 206 Mechanic Street has, has been continued. It's an, it's an open public hearing. We've continued to this evening. The applicant is before you. In your packets this evening, you actually have a number of new items. You've received, just received the peer review from BSC for our stormwater peer review. We're still waiting on traffic peer review, but the stormwater has been updated. Obviously just got it today, so we probably won't get into too much detail, but Frank's here to kind of run down a little bit of the list of of what he's found and what the applicant could be working on between now and the next meeting. You also have a sound study that was provided by the applicant. Just a reminder, this is on Mechanic Street, so it's not necessarily required sound study, but my understanding is given the, the concerns of both the board and some of the neighbors. The applicant went ahead and pursued that for our, our understanding and oh, and lastly, you do have some additional elevations that are provided to you this evening. As a reminder, at the last meeting, that was certainly one of the, the real sticking points. You know, this is a prominent corner of town or welcome to town. So, you know, the visual aspects of it is, is obviously important. So you do have some updated visuals for you this evening.
Jim, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant.
So, good evening. For the record, John Cusick with Bowler Engineering. I am here with the applicant Wayne Finnegan and project attorney Paul Felbin. So it's nice to, nice to see you all again. I think as Jim had presented, this was quite accurate per, per usual. But since our last hearing, we made a full presentation of the project for the board. And we've since received the peer review comment from BSC. Again, per, per usual thorough review of the, of the project. I do not want to speak for BSC, but I've had a chance to look through the, the letter. And again, I think I would characterize it as very, very minor housekeeping items. I think there were just a couple of details that they requested us to make a minor change to and, and add one note to the plan. So I didn't see any issues with the peer review that we certainly can't incorporate on a set of plans to get for you for the, for the next hearing. So beyond that, at the last hearing, again, it was very good dialogue. We listened closely to what the board had to say, what the butters had to say. And really two things jumped out at us relative to what additional information we could provide. The first, as Jim had mentioned, was a, was a sound study. We didn't initially come in with a sound study as, you know, the site mainly fronts on Mechanic Street. And we're really, you know, probably well over a thousand feet away from closest residential butter. However, based on concerns that that brought up at the hearing, we wanted to take a closer look at it just to make sure that our project would not cause any nuisance sounds as defined in the, in the ordinance, both local and the state requirements. So we have submitted a sound study to you. I don't have our sound study engineer here to present the finer details of it. But to summarize, the report looked as they typically do against the baseline condition. Modeled what we were proposing against, again, the state and local ordinance and shows that the project would be in, in full compliance under both scenarios and including the scenic road by law. By the way, they added that one in here as well. So that is outlined in the study and they did take that, the step further as the board has been asking. That does include any hitching of trucks. I think that's sometimes something that the, isn't always incorporated in the sound study that has been because I know the board does look for that. So that is in your packet. And again, I just would like to report that it does show full, really full compliance with the ordinances. We've also, I think at the last hearing, if I could share my, share my screen. Had presented a. Bear with me, let me find my right screen here. We had prevent, presented a architectural elevation. Let's see, did that show, show up here? Can everybody see this?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you. We presented the architectural elevation at the intersection located here. And again, just to recap, part of what we presented is we are absolutely aware and have worked closely with staff early on that the prominent location. And we wanted to make sure the building was attractive and fit in well. And really what we presented was the corner of the building. We put some glass around the front. We had a lot of articulation and scoring within the structure itself. And we are adding a welcome to Bellingham sign up at that front corner. That's the first thing that folks see as they come into town. The specific question we had was, well, okay, if you, if you go a little further, you know, down, you know, spread out the view a little bit, what does that look like? So I just changed my, my screen. Did that show up?
No.
Okay, I was afraid that would happen. Let me. Let me try to do that again. I had too many documents open. I apologize.
That's fine.
Let's see. So. Here we go. So we moved that out a little bit. And again, to reiterate, this was that front corner that we were just looking at. And then that's where the building goes down Maple Street. So again, we've kept the articulation of the building going down. You can see the different colors and this is kind of an in and out pattern. This one's hidden behind a tree, so it's hard to see. So we've broken that up. It is tilted up construction. What we've also done, and this isn't new, this is on the original plan and I presented to this last time, but we've added a berm along the really the, the Maple Street front edge. Berm, you know, varies in height depending on where you are, but the purpose of the berm is to break up, break up the massing of the building. And there would be shrubbery and trees throughout that as well to add a further break to the, to the building. So we've, we've added that as well. So again, we think it fits in well and, and is attractive, but you did ask us to take a look at what that would be and show you. Show you what that might look like. So we just wanted to provide that to the board formally for your, for your review. And that's, that's really it for the new information. So the new information was essentially the BSC letter that you had just received, the sound study and the elevation, which is the same elevation, just the view was expanded out a little bit to give you a fuller picture of what we were proposing. So with that, would be happy to go into any detail or answer any questions you may have.
Um. Can you tell us a little bit about the stormwater, what you provided to Frank?
Absolutely. So the stormwater system, I'll call it a really above and beyond system. And so let me change my screen here. So the stormwater right in this area here, there's a large existing detention basin on site. This detention basin was constructed back in the, it was at the early to mid 2000s. And it was sized appropriately to handle what was the Conroy development over to the, the west of our site. As well as this development, they actually assumed that it would handle stormwater runoff from about 300,000 square feet of impervious area on the site. They did it that way because at the time when, when this building was being proposed, there wasn't any plans, immediate plans for development of, of this piece. They knew it would be developed one day, so they just wanted to make the accommodations to handle the stormwater. So that basin was constructed, was, was built, certificate of compliances were, were issued to the Conservation Commission and everything is functioning fine. When we moved forward, we met with the town and in particular Conservation Commission, talked about what we're planning to do and the one item that they asked us to, to look at to see is if we could make any enhancements to stormwater quality. Above and beyond what would already have been provided, you know, essentially regulations change, things change. They wanted to make sure we fully complied with the new standards that may not have been in place at the time that basin was built. So essentially what we've done to address that comment is we have provided a standalone stormwater system on this site. So every ounce of paved area within the parking lot is captured in conventional catch basin, deep sump catch basin piping. And we have an underground infiltration system that's located right about in this area where I'm moving my cursor. That has been designed to store, treat and infiltrate up to the water quality volume that you would otherwise need to provide. And infiltrates that on, on, on site. Again, in this area, there is very, very good sandy material. It's, it's actually great material on site. So we're able to get it back to the ground and recharge it. Between our proposed basin and the existing basin, really water up and through the hundred year storm is, is infiltrated back into the ground and recharged after being treated. So again, that's, that's why I started with a little bit of a, it's an above and beyond stormwater system design.
Anything else you would like to add?
Not on my end, but certainly happy to answer questions.
Okay. I'd like to hold off until I hear from Frank. I know Frank has only recently received the port, the report. Can you give us a brief overview?
Sure. So stop me if you've heard this before. This site is very similar in its design and function as the 152 Depot Street. So a lot of the same comments, I think, replicable here. So as Mr. Kichik had already talked about, the site is designed to pick up the runoff from the new impervious area at 206 Mechanic Street. It then runs that through deep sump catch basin with huts. The runoff is then directed to where the hand is basically. Thank you for leaving it there, John. To essentially be infiltrated and the runoff from the two, the 10, almost up to the 25 year storm pretty much goes right into the ground. But the interesting feature of the underground infiltration system is the first row is, is called what's an isolator row. And what that is, it's the first row of infiltration structure are wrapped in a filter fabric that essentially catches the, any pollutants in the water and essentially wipes out or removes the total dependent solids, which is the item that carry the pollutants. That is isolated so that you can shut off the ends. And if you needed to, you could basically flush out any pollutants that have accrued in that over time. A little bit of runoff, less than what's getting there from existing issues run down. You can sort of see that little weird, looks like chicken leg or something like that right there. That's a riprap swale that essentially allows any runoff from the 25 to 100 to go into that larger existing detention basin. And again, as had been mentioned, that basin was designed to hold another 300,000 square feet of impervious area. Essentially it's not getting anywhere near that volume. So overall, I think the stormwater management system is appropriate. It meets all the standards from the state and the town level. There were a couple of items I just wanted to mention. One is, there's a couple of waiver requests. The waiver request related to stormwater is the site is very flat. So rather than have the catch basins limited, look at the edges near the curbing. They're located in the middle of the driveway areas and stuff. It's not really conducive to basically put the sort of the top stone there, the, the curb inlet, because there's no curb at that point. So there's a request for the board to consider to not allow or not require the curb inlet structures. There are a few minor items that I just sort of want to touch on. All of them, I think, could be addressed relatively easily. One is, this is gonna, this distributes to more than one acre of land. This will require national pollution discharge elimination system permit, DPD's permit from EPA. Just a standard comment, we would recommend that any stormwater pollution prevention plans and application to EPA copies of that be submitted to the town. The we, because the site is relatively flat, the pipe grades are relatively flat, half a percent to 1%. And because care should be taken when that is, that drainage system is installed, we've recommended that the board require an as-built plan afterward. So they can confirm what, make sure that was built according to the way it was. If it's built too flat, system parts of the pipe might not function. Third item is that the catch basin detail shown on the plan goes a 1975 or 1980 invert, sorry, some. It shows a two foot deep sump. The standard right now by, not only in the town, but DEP and in the industry is to put in a four foot deep sump. It's just a, a minor edit to the detail sheet. Let's see. The pipe is HDPE pipe. And again, it's got shallow cover as was suggested in the past. HDPE pipe can be that will meet a heavy load like a truck driving over that. We just suggest that they just provide that information. It's very easy to get from the manufacturer. Let's see. There's a couple of edits to be made labeling items on the plan to show where some of the sedimentation control is shown, but it's not labeled on one of the sheets. And then lastly, they refer to a temporary settling basin in the sedimentation erosion control notes, and they don't have, they show it on the plan. They just don't have a detail. And again, I think we would suggest that that detail for a temporary sedimentation, temporary settling basin be shown on the plans. Other than that, that's really all the comments we have. And again, I think we have no other issues with the site.
Before we turn it over to other boards, I just want to specifically thank the applicant for the steps they've made since the last meeting, listening to the board and listening to the public. Appreciate. At this point, I'd like to ask board members, Brian, have any questions?
I don't have any questions regarding what Frank just discussed. I do have some questions about it's more of a cosmetic nature, I suppose, for this meeting.
Now's the time.
All right. So in terms of the wall and the sign to welcome to Bellingham. There are cosmetically in front of that corner, there's a number of obstructions in that particular area in terms of like, there's a big black box for the lights. There's several poles. So I would be interested in perhaps, and then Jim, I don't know how we do this, looking at that, since it's going to be a prominent feature in this intersection. Looking to the design of something and how it works with the, because there are significant obstructions on the sidewalk and right in front of that area. So we're gonna have to be creative in that regard. I don't know if you have any comments on that, Jim?
I think I might.
Oh, go ahead, Bill. Sorry.
Other people may have some comments.
Yep.
So I don't want to have you keep repeating yourself.
All right. Then, then my other, sort of my, another cosmetic question is, it would be interesting to me to see an elevation coming from traveling west to east on 140 to see what it looks like where the trucks will actually be stored. I think the building next to this one does a good job of sort of hiding or obscuring the trucks. But from, from where the hand is and traveling that way, what are we going to see on the back or the business end of this building? That I think that would be something we should take a look at.
Yeah, I think the one thing I would add towards that, and we can certainly provide any additional views that you want. It's intra, the one thing we wanted to do with this building is we wanted to set it back off of the, off of the intersection. Again, based on some early meetings we had with, with staff and what we thought some of the concerns were going to be. We've set that way off the setback. I think the setback up here is 20 or 25 feet, something along those lines. We set the building back 70. To put it in perspective, that's the corner of this building right next to us, which is probably twice the size of our building. It's right here and there's a big line of trees that, that's located there as well. So I think where the truck court is at the back of the building and that's setback probably another 70 feet from the front of the building. It's setback quite a ways. So I don't think it's going to be all that, that prominent when you're traveling in, in easterly direction.
Okay. Elizabeth, is there is there a wall there or a fence or some sort of screening where the truck bays are?
No, I don't, I don't think there is because it was setback far enough, but based on your, your comments, one thing that we could, one thing that we could do, which I think would address what your, your concern is, is we could certainly add some, some, some landscaping in this area over here, you know, thinking of perhaps, you know, like a, like a green giant or, you know, like a spruce or something along that area here, which would then kind of block what we're, what I think you're, you're referring to is the, is the view at that back truck area. Be happy to, happy to incorporate that.
Yeah, that would, that would be helpful if you don't mind.
Not at all.
Dennis?
Yeah, this may be a little early to ask this question, but I'm going to ask it anyways. When they did, I don't know actually where they did their test pits, but I was just wondering if they ran into any contaminants in the soil.
Nope. Very, very, very good question. You know, there were some cars stored on the site through the years when. When Wayne and his company went through the initial due diligence process, you know, not only did we do test pits for, for drainage, for the suitability of the soils. But they also did a full environmental assessment. Obviously, they, they wouldn't want to make the investment in the property that they're doing. If there was a contamination issue. And you know, my understanding is everything came back, came back clean. There wasn't a concern that was identified based on the testing.
Excellent. Thank you. That's it.
Dennis, you have any questions?
My only question is, in regards to any potential tenants in the future. Maybe we want to suss out whether or not we should have signage on the actual building for a future tenant. Which that really isn't necessarily a question, but I guess I would kind of want the board to sort of think about that in terms of. You know, we've got that welcome to Bellingham sign. Does it make sense to have signage on the building for any potential tenants? So I guess my question is, is there a plan for that? Or should we talk about, you know, potentially limiting any building signage?
Dennis, you have any comments?
I guess on that I defer to Dwayne if there were plans relative to building signage.
Thank you, John, for the record, Wayne Fenigan from Howland Development. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Yeah, so. We, we tend to, to construct the buildings with a. With, without a marquee kind of. In scope and without a sign in scope. There will be signs that will need to be placed. Obviously, at some point in the building, but I think we could work with the board in terms of the placement of the signs so that it doesn't. Interfere with or, or in any way obstruct the key feature of, of the welcome to Bellingham sign. So we would definitely work with you on that.
Sure. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Back to your, your sound study. I'm assuming, picking up what you said. Not adding anything to the ambient noise that is there right now. All under the current standards, correct?
Correct. They, they took the ambient levels and they compared the proposed sound levels. Generated through the various activities, just to make sure that they wouldn't exceed any, any thresholds based on those levels.
I do remember from our last meeting, you had a couple of residents indicate. At night, they thought the sound traveled somewhat. I'm wondering what the viability would be of putting a burn back there. Perhaps a sound fence to muffle some of the sounds. Something you can look at. I know one neighbor in particular mentioned that.
So I think the burn wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily work and the photography kind of works against us. But we, we might be able to look at putting some, some landscaping up, up in this area. Again, I don't think, based on the projected levels, it would be a concern. But we can certainly look to put some, some landscaping in this area to, to further break anything up.
That would be appreciated. Earlier, Brian had mentioned the view going eastbound. I know you mentioned putting a fence in, I'm sorry, any, any visibility of putting a fence in there? A ten foot high fence or something that can, you.
Potentially, if that were the case, so you're talking, you're thinking something like, like a vinyl fence, perhaps, like along the stretch of the. Of the road coming in to block.
Maybe at a different angle.
Yeah, I think if you were gonna do it, I think this would be the angle, right? Because that would be the more of a block.
The outskirts, sir.
Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at the best way to, to enhance screening of the side.
And then I think as we move forward, I'd like to get some input on the Bellingham sign. I'm wondering if somehow we can do something. Bellingham's an old, old town, like a lot of times around here. And with the new structure. It's impossible to do. Like a wood carved sign. Lending more to a welcome to our town that you may see, may see in other towns. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think absolutely. I think, I think architecture is one of those things that, that's certainly subjective. And you know, we kind of just took a crack at it, but the intent was to provide a sign that the town wants and.
I appreciate that.
So we'd absolutely work with the town to provide what, what details and specifics, specifics do you'd be looking for.
Okay, if we have another option that, you know, people could look at.
Do you have something or somebody you'd want to provide an example to us of what to try to emulate? Or would you like us to take a crack at something else? I mean, obviously, if you had something to provide us, that would be the, the best idea.
Do you have any ideas?
Yeah, there, I mean, I think the applicant's right, it can be somewhat subjective. And I bet there's a whole range of folks in town that could give a lot of good ideas. And you know, there's certainly folks that are on here today are certainly welcome to send some ideas into the board. You know, I think all along when we discussed this prominent site, the thought was potentially maybe mimicking. The stone wall in some way across the street, making a little elongating itself. And maybe having an insert within that, that wall that said, welcome to Bellingham, whether that's stone or, or it's your point, wood carved. Just something, something I think that's isn't modern, but, but is inviting and, and. And, and looks, you know, really good. Because I mean, that's, that's the first thing you're going to see when you, when you come into town. So I think, I think it could be worthwhile to, you know, if anybody has any comments or thoughts, feel free to send them in to the planning office. But if, if the applicant wouldn't mind providing maybe an alternative there to a, maybe a less modern, or maybe stone or wood. That would be appreciated.
You can do that.
You know, again, it's gonna be the first thing you, you see as you come in.
Yeah, no.
Bellingham is, oh, you just celebrated a significant birthday, maybe in our 250 years or something. Please don't probably hold me to that. That could be, but we just, you know, sort of blend into our, our history, so. I appreciate what you've done. Um, any other comments from the board before I open it to the?
Yeah, Bill, whoop, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Rob, thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Bill. Just chiming into the sign comments. I, I agree, something a little bit more, I guess, not rustic, but. Basically, I echo the same comments that Bill and everyone has. Also, just, I would also say low maintenance as well. You know, whatever the materials are, that would be great. Stone would be nice. And then one, I have just a question going back to the stormwater stuff. I think this is for John. I haven't seen that, that basin in the back of the property. I know it's pretty large. Just regarding the status of that, what exactly is the state? Do you, do you see any type of maintenance needed or anything? I don't know how the side slopes are looking, if there's any large shrubs or trees growing in the basin. Because I know it is fairly old and these things do tend to get a little out of hand.
Good, good question. That was, that was our concern as well early on. So I've actually gone out to the site a couple of times, you know, I've been out, you know, after heavy rainstorms to make sure it was working. And it, it definitely is working, is draining. We did notice that there was, you know, a little bit of, a little bit of overgrowth. It wasn't that, that bad, but it certainly, you know. You could have, could have used a little bit of cleaning up around some of the side slopes. And this came up during the conservation commission meeting as well, which we assured the commission and which we have done. We've reached out to the property manager of this building here. The, the way it was a tri-party agreement, the way it was written up is these folks here have the, the management responsibility of this basin. So we've reached out to them and asked them to get that clean and they've acknowledged receipt. And I'm not sure if they've done it yet, but they've certainly acknowledged that it's something that will get, will get done.
If I could just pipe in, I was out there walking the site February 9th. And again, we, I was with our environmental scientist. We observed the same thing that that area could use not a lot, but some maintenance. And as of the February 9th, it had not. On the other hand, the ground was frozen. I'm not sure that was conducive to do maintenance, but yeah, just.
Makes sense. The foot of snow we're about to get might make things a little bit tricky too, so.
Yeah, and I think that was the issue. They acknowledged it, but you know, to Frank's point, I think it's caused more harm than good going in there during certain conditions.
Absolutely. Yeah, I know you don't want to be ripping up the side slopes and making more damage. So, nope, that makes sense. So I think that was the only thing I had. Thank you to the, to the applicant, the engineer, and thank you Frank too for the, the review. Very helpful, good information. Yep, that's it for me.
I have one last comment before I open it to the public. John, can you provide Jim or Amy with a copy letter that went to the company that's responsible for the maintenance?
Yeah, I think Wayne can provide that and we can get that over to Amy, not a problem at all.
Also, I did notice, and. Yeah, two questions out there. This is going to be a, how big a warehouse?
A hundred and 24,000 square feet, give or take, bear with me, let me just confirm the exact number. 124,200.
And at this point in time, I know, and maybe asked by the public. We do not know who that would be, correct?
I can let Wayne answer that, but as of recently, we had not had a tenant secured, but Wayne can confirm.
That's correct, John, and. Mr. Chairman, no tenant confirmed yet. We're building this, this building on spec. Common practice with this type of design.
Okay, and as we move on to traffic, we're gonna look at high-end use for this. When we do our traffic studies we discussed last time.
That's correct.
I'd like to open it to the public. Jim, does anyone have their hands raised?
Could I just ask one quick question?
Of course.
Thank you. So something else that I think we should think about in this process is. Once we do have a design for that sign, that, you know, who's gonna own it and who's gonna maintain it? And how does that work? But also, just to go back to what I said earlier about that particular corner. If, you know, if, if you guys take a stab at trying to design something, there are pretty prominent obstructions. At that corner, at that specific location. So if that design can incorporate some. Just incorporate or take, I don't know what to do. I don't know what, how you creatively configure or locate that wall or whatever it is. But that's something to keep in mind as well. And then lastly, I don't know if a full site visit is necessarily warranted. But I think particularly when we start to, to talk about traffic and where the trucks are going to be exiting. And all of that, I think it would be helpful if to get a firsthand look. If it's not a site visit, maybe staking it out where the trucks will be, where the corner of the building is. Just, just for some future consideration, we just get a good understanding of that.
Brian, I, I would recommend, picking up on what you said, that perhaps we combine both. That they stake it out and we do it aside, some, some Saturday if that's feasible. Just to increase our comfort.
I'd also be in favor of doing a site visit, especially for that basin in the back.
I see Eric, you had your hand raised?
I do. Name is.
Eric, you're breaking up a little bit.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Eric Vandewall, 60 Fox Run Road. I have a quick question about snow removal on that property. Are they gonna put in snow removal for the trucks? I want to know if they're gonna put some kind of apparatus in to remove the snow from the top of the trucks.
Great question, sir.
That's, that's not just for this project now. So I've been at your meeting for other projects. It's the same question for each one of these warehouses that are going in. Snow removal is a problem. Since I own a business on Depot Street. This last storm of 18 inches, there wasn't one truck that went by my building that shoveled off the top of their trucks. Jessica's Law in New Hampshire states you have to remove it. Mass, I don't know about, but if somebody dies from snow on a truck. That's the landlord's responsibility.
Eric, having insured a bunch of transportation companies. The responsibility falls on the transportation company and the drivers to remove snow from their vehicles.
Right, and the state of Massachusetts is also, the landlord can also get sued if a vehicle leaves their property without being maintained.
I appreciate that. I do know there was somewhat of a moratorium on finding a couple of years ago. I believe that moratorium has ended and that they are ticketing people. Is there any way? To put a boom or something in the corner of the building to remove snow from the top of the vehicles? Because in all honesty, you're, you're gonna be heading down, down most likely to 495 fairly. I do know some of my former clients had a boom at one end of the building where they drove under. With the snow was scraped off the top of the vehicles.
Yeah, I can't necessarily speak to that. And typically, that's something that a tenant might look at. Because it becomes a bit of an operational issue, how they, how they clean their trucks. You know, some, some do choose to do that. You typically see that on some of the, like, the larger type of distribution centers. Where they've got that, that big snow scraper that you drive under. Typically don't see it on this size, but it would be something that I think would be really tenant driven and really how they handle their operations.
But it should be the responsibility because the tenant won't do it. Because we see it at Best Buy and Dunkin' Donuts and this new bus little company here on Depot Street, they don't brush off their snow either. So it needs to fall on the person who's building the building. If it doesn't, it's not going to fall on the tenant.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, perhaps the applicant could provide either, however, the documentation that's going to be for splitting up this building. If it's multiple tenants or if it's not a maintenance agreement for the board's review and, and early approval before occupancy. And one of those could be a stipulation for what the gentleman is speaking about, about proper snow removal for both trucks and on-site.
Jim, I'd like to take it one step further. As we move forward, we should probably have part of. Our findings, a snow and ice management program. That is the responsibility of the tenant. And all the landlord to address that. From my own experience, taking the. From my own experience, uh, taking the, um, that's been done in a safe manner. So you don't have the exposure to employees shoveling that snow. Doesn't get created over again. But, um, yeah, in Massachusetts, you, you can be fine. And they are fine. There's a, um, for a year or two, going back three or four, maybe five years ago. I think that you should look at a snow ice management program. For the snow, but the vehicles as well. Thank you for bringing that up and, uh, we will look at on, uh, Depot Street as well.
Thank you. I have one more question. How many trucks are coming out of this facility?
We, we, we don't know yet based on the tenant. How many bays do you have there, John?
You know what? I don't have the exact answer, but give me a second, I'll count it up.
If I count your spots, it looks like over forty plus the extra spare spots in the back.
It's probably close to that. Um, I'll give you an exact answer in a second, but it's, it's.
I don't need an exact answer. The reason I'm asking is because the amount of warehouses that are being built in Bellingham. And now that the town is also going to be looking at a half a million square feet just off a high street. I'm just trying to add up all the trucks that are going to be in Bellingham in the next year. That's all.
Eric, thank you for your participation and your question.
Thank you. When is your next meeting, if I don't mind, um, when it's one-on-one?
Continuation to, I believe, March tenth, undoubtedly public, but right now, I believe based on the, um, parties involved, that may be what we may be looking at, but we'll probably have that discussion within a few minutes, sir.
Okay, no problem. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Again, thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Dunleavy.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I unmuted myself. Didn't know if that was allowable and that you could hear me. Going to the sound study, if I would, um, I'd like to call attention to table nine and table ten, which is the predicted sound levels from the warehouse. Two points, they indicate that the current sound, um, as received in Bellingham is thirty-three at night, thirty-three during the day. Uh, I just want an interpretation of these two tables. Is this to suggest that the sound generated from this facility at night and day, the ambient contribution of sound is less than the current sound levels at Bellingham at thirty-three and thirty-nine decibels per day respectively? Um, because this threshold here, if I look at fifty-seven High Street, using that as an example, um, the highest number during the nighttime I see is thirty-two. We're currently at thirty-three and the highest number I see during the day is also at thirty-two where per their study we're at thirty-nine. Is, is that my interpretation of this correct? That the modeling of this is that the sound that would land on High Street is attributed to this facility is less than the current ambient sounds now at day and night?
I wasn't fully following the, the, the questions, right? Do I apologize? But if we're going to get into that, to that level of detail on, on the chart, I'd probably have to have the sound engineer respond to that. But one thing I can say with, with the confidence based on my conversations with the sound engineer and reading the report is that it is in full compliance with, um, all of the, the requirements under the scenic ordinance, the, the local ordinance and the state requirements. That I can certainly state with confidence, but I don't want to misanswer your question because I'm not a sound engineer.
And John, just to clarify, that takes in consideration the scenic, the scenic by law, correct?
Uh, yes, they, uh, they made reference to the scenic by law, uh, within their, their, their study, um, when I was speaking with, uh, with them.
Yeah, I, I also read this report and it did take into account the scenic by law, but I just needed further clarification on this table nine and table ten, if the interpretation of it was correct.
Yeah, number one addresses your concerns. They did take in consideration the scenic by law.
Yeah, so I, so I see, yeah, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I do see that it took into consideration the scenic by law, um, parameter, so that.
What I'd like to do, um, Mr. Dunleavy, if it's possible, I think one of, one or two options. Uh, your question can be put in writing and or you can have the sound engineer briefly address your question as the next meeting.
Sure, I'll put it in writing. I, I thought the sound engineer was in attendance tonight. That's why I was driving down to this level of detail. The next thing concerning the sound study as well, if the board has not recognized, it will point it out. The sound levels that are attributed to this facility, um, at all the receiving points are both the same at day and nighttime, which would suggest to me, the expectation is that they intend to run this facility twenty-four seven with the same type of operations both day and night because they have no different sound level generation at their day or their nighttime levels. I thought we had discussed that we would implore upon this, um, facility to have no outdoor in the yard at night. Uh, we were seeking limitations on the hours of operations. I would be more amenable to something that would be more palatable to the developer that this could still take place indoors at night, but, but not outdoors at night without nighttime to be defined. But clearly the suggestion here that the development intends to run daytime operations is that there was no difference in those operations, given that their sound study has exactly the same noise. It's both day and night.
Um, I'd like to address that before we turn it over to the applicant. We asked the applicant to reduce, um, outdoor work and they don't, in the exact hours from the, I believe like ten to five. So to John, you know, we, we've now, this has been brought up in two consecutive meetings. Is able to reduce the outdoor work hours from ten until five in the morning?
Can I, can I address that, Sean? So Paul Feldman, good evening, everybody. Uh, Paul Feldman for the applicant. We, we don't know who the tenants are. Uh, there may be some tenants that don't have twenty-four seven operations, but we, we can't, uh, agree to a condition that's going to limit nighttime operations. When we know from the sound study, we comply with all of the regulatory requirements and, uh, that, that are, that the state and the town have. We're, we're not going to be adding to the ambient noise in a, in a, in a nuisance or detrimental way. And, uh, for a project of this size to ask the applicant to live with a condition that says, you know, you can't operate outside at night when we don't know who the tenant is going to be, can really impair, um, the marketability of the building and frankly, it can impair being able to get financing to build it. Because lenders will, will really bristle at that kind of, um, condition. So I don't want to create a false expectation, uh, about it, you know? We don't, it, it's only a hundred and twenty-four thousand square foot building. It's not one of these uh, larger operation, high-volume operation centers that, you know, are being built and developed. And we know that the ambient sound is in compliance with all the requirements, so, um, that condition would really be problematic to the, to the ability to develop this project.
Okay.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, so when we speak about nighttime operations, the applicant, clearly the impact's not just noise. It's traffic at night, the type of traffic at night coming through streets, tractor-trailer traffic that may not be there if the outside operations were limited. It's the outdoor illumination considering. Um, it, it's essentially a, a detriment to what is a, a bedroom community having industrial activity happening during the night and transforming our community from a bedroom community to an industrial community at night. It's not just about the sound.
Certainly appreciate the comment and, and, and appreciate the concern. Fortunately, where this property is located, uh, we know in the traffic study will come and the traffic discussion will come. We know that virtually eighty percent or more of the volume is just going to come out, go up mechanic street and go out to four ninety-five. There's this particular building and where it's located is not going to put truck traffic on local streets.
It will, wouldn't you, would you agree it's going to cause truck traffic to traverse Route one forty, perhaps go westbound through the center of our town?
There is a, there absolutely, I'm sure the traffic.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, I, I don't think this is the venue right now. Why I like to do and talking about traffic is what we have more, um, traffic information. I don't think this is the venue right now to discuss which way traffic is going. I appreciate the viewpoints from both people, but I think for the benefit of everyone involved, as we get more traffic information, that may be a venue to discuss this.
Okay, so I'll let my comment then rest simply on that it's, it's not just about the noise when we talk about nighttime operations as I spoke to them a while ago before. Next.
Mr. Dunleavy.
Yes, thank you. Um, next topic I'd like to talk about is I looked at the elevation, uh, diagrams rendering. I, I don't see anything particularly aesthetic, uh, in those. I, I think and hope we could do better than that. It still speaks industrial all over that facade. On the same vein, um, signage, I'm sorry I had to join the meeting late tonight. I was working, but was signage discussed? And is there going to be multiple signs on that building or is it going to be just a single marquee? Indicating the tenants are, which is much more appealing than, you know, every door, every doorway having its own sign on it, if you will. Um, last thing and I'll conclude with, um, the speed, I brought this to Jim Kupfer's attention in the past. I don't know what happened when the, uh, the warehouses at, at Bellingham, uh, the Campanelli facility went in, but certainly no resident was expecting our speed limit to increase from thirty to thirty-five miles per hour on that street. That was never discussed. People went through the roof on it. We already had people speeding on that street. You could not drive down that speed at the speed limit without people running an inch off your rear end. Now the same thing happens, people trying to drive forty-five miles an hour down the street. So I would implore in this board to set the condition, uh, because in all respect, Jim, it has not been acted upon upon my request to set the speed limit back to thirty. The town has the right to do so. It could even set it down to twenty-five if they wanted to. That minimally the speed limit on that street is reduced back to the pre-Campanelli speed limit, which was thirty.
And Jim, uh, who is responsibility in town for declaring what the speed limit is on certain roads?
Right, so we, we did an analysis of the speed, uh, along Maple Street. The section which Mr. Dunleavy is referring to has always been thirty-five according to the DPW director and the safety officer. It's, it, it varies depending on location of Maple Street. We do not have authority to set speed limits. It's unfortunate. Mr. Dunleavy will, would put you in that position. It is, we have the ability to request it from the state. We have to do a study. It does cost funds. That doesn't mean it can't be done. Uh, but I would, I would tell you that, uh, a majority of the time when a study is done, that speed limit goes up because it's the percentage of the, uh, the vehicles driving on that road. Um, and the analysis of which they, their speed at that time, not what is a safe standard as I agree should be. Uh, but that is the process that is in place at the state level at this time. Um, you know, a different conversation is whether or not we could change that kind of legislation. But as of right now, that is certainly not, um, an ability and certainly not on one forty.
So, yeah, if, if I may.
Mr. Dunleavy, excuse me.
Yep.
Uh, Jim, can you please, um, respond to Mr. Dunleavy's question, right? And what you explained tonight, just to clarify the issue.
Sure, I believe I, I did that at the last Maple Street project, but I could do that again, not a problem.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dunleavy.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so just to be sure, I cannot say whether the speed limit was supposed, was officially thirty-five miles per on that road, but everybody knows that there was thirty mile per hour signs posted on that road. And after the Campanelli facility went into operation, those signs came down. And in fact, there's no signage there at all today as to what the speed limit is, so people drive whatever they want. So clearly, um, we all recognize that there had been thirty mile per hour speed limit signs posted there, whether it was thirty-five. And that's what those signs should have been. People at least did try to drive thirty miles per hour, um, because that's what it was signed at. And secondly, Jim, we're getting a little bit out of my warehouse and it's not a challenge to you, but more an education to me. I believe there was legislation passed at the state level that allows any community to set, um, speed limits on their roads, not their state highway roads, but on their locally owned roads to twenty-five miles per hour without the need for a, uh, traffic study.
That's, yep, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, that was in response to many people getting hit by bicycles in Boston.
Gentlemen, 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 um, I'd like the other topic. I, I don't think this is the correct venue. Or to the public forum on the, uh, the speed limit. Uh, Mr. Dunleavy, what I can ask is that, um, we direct the public safety officer to put the appropriate speed limit posting signs on Maple Street in both directions to know what the speed limit is.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm finished. I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with.
Jim, I, I, I know, I apologize for interrupting you. In the way we'll try to put proper signage up, but I don't think this is the best venue to back and forth with the town.
Yeah, the, the, the point about the signage was spawned only because my request was that we look at the speed limit as part of the facility and that return to the pre-Campanelli levels. That was the gist of my discussion.
I will have the, uh, planning board reach out to the safety officer.
Thank you. Any, any rebuttal by the applicant on the facade and the signage?
I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Dunleavy.
Yeah, does the applicant have any comment about my comments on the facade and the signage? If it would be a marquee signage or individual signage on the building to each tenant?
Um, we, we discussed that earlier.
Yeah, and I, and I mentioned, I'm sorry.
Bring up this, the, uh, slide of the sign.
Yes, bear with me.
And I apologize to the board. I had joined late.
This is what were, they proposed right now. Advocate into looking at something.
Right.
Not as modern. We've also raised the issue and I'm sure you're well aware, Mr. Dunleavy. We have a lot of, um, with poles and lights and light is there, so this may not be the most appropriate sign. So look at other options. We've asked the public to, um, give their opinion. Idea what you would like the sign to look like, please look at the planning board now.
Yeah, I've been on the whole time.
I also believe the applicant, uh.
I've been, it's been the top of an hour and ten minutes. So this is the welcome to Bellingham sign. I saw that.
Yes, sir.
Signage, signage specific to each tenant.
I, I, I'd like to have the applicant address that. Again, they do not know how many tenants they'll have, but from an early discussion when you were not here, they, they use as much reduced signage as possible, but I'll articulate that.
So this is Ray Finnegan, Mr. Dunleavy with Howland Development. Uh, earlier, it was brought up by a board member about the signage, the tenant signage on the building. And we said with, without, without.
And we said with, without, without knowing the, the use or specifically the tenant, we can't necessarily identify exactly how the signage will work, but we would work with the board to ensure that it doesn't in any way take away from the sign, the welcome to Bellingham sign and something that's acceptable with the board for, and, and would work between up, you know, the board and a potential tenant.
If the board saw a fit that a marquee sign that had the individual tenants on that marquee sign rather than multiple signs across the buildings, your mark, the building for your mark, for your tenants, would that be something that would then be considered working with the board?
Mr. Dunley, we're, we're not there right now. We're going to redesign what the welcome to Bellingham signage. If we move down, we'll get input from the public and the board as to the improper signage. So it is reduced as best we can, but still meets the needs of the applicant or the. So yes, we will work with the town and the, together to determine the proper signage for the building as we move further down the road.
Okay, so topic of signage, as a deep dive, is subject for another meeting, is that correct?
That will be discussed as we move down the road.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I'll hold comments till then. Thank you all for my opportunity to speak tonight, I appreciate it.
Jim, you see anyone else? Any other comments? Yes, I know the public has some concerns. We are going to address the snow and ice management for both the vehicles and the property. Some of this snow will be stored onsite, they have a plan for that. We are going to look into signage as we move down the road as well as traffic. Any other comments from the public or the board? I would entertain a motion for a continuance.
We're looking at March 10th.
It's March 10th, realistic, gentlemen.
So relative to what was talked about tonight with adding some of the, the minor changes to address Frank's comments, add some of the landscaping comments and some of the plan changes we've talked about, we can certainly do that, we can get together just relative. I want to speak to signage on, on the detailed side, we might need a, a sign vendor involved with that, but I think we potentially could have something by the 10th on that. So I think we definitely have something to, to talk about majority of.
Okay, John, we, we can, you know, move, this, I don't want to put this sign in cement right yet, so to speak. I think that moving object as we move down the road, and I think it's fool enough to deal with us. If you give some options and also we'll get options from the public and people, I think we've worked through this process.
Yeah, and I think the.
I don't want you to, you know, just to have something for us in the 10th.
Yep.
Move along, we can find to what we want to do.
Right.
Again, based on the next meeting. And also if you could reach out to Amy, she may have contact information from Mr. Dunley to make sure you get his question addressed with regard to the sound study.
Yep. Yep, we can, we can do that.
Mr. Dunley, if you could please put that in writing to me and then I can just forward that to get you the answers that you need. If you could just put that in writing, that would be great.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. So I believe I'll entertain a motion for motion to the March 10th meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
We've motioned the floor, it has been seconded for continuation to the March 10th meeting. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, I'm standing, that motion passes unanimously. Do I have on here tonight for this, I encourage you to participate on the 10th and if you have any ideas on signage, plenty more of that. Again, thank everyone for their participation. I also want to thank the applicant and Frank for the work done and specifically to the applicant for listening, not only to the board, but to neighbors that moved through this project.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all.
At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Bill, could I just make one quick reminder to everybody? I just wanted to remind everybody that we will be having an additional meeting next Thursday and that's simply the only agenda item will be the Locust Street draft decision with the conditions and it's at six o'clock, not seven o'clock. So just wanted to.
And the public, there'll be a one agenda item, Locust Street, the Bungayburg project at six o'clock on a Thursday evening, March. That will be via Zoom. I'm also pleased to announce, based on our schedule and the current conditions with COVID in the state, and to go in-person meetings begin now, March. Although we are allowed to continue through April, our start of March.
Just so you know, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree completely with you. Just so you know, the governor did extend it through middle of July.
Okay.
But that doesn't change, need to change any, any of your plans, just, just letting you know.
Thank you very much. So I have a motion in the floor to adjourn, please. Do I have a second?
It's a second.
Motion in the floor, there's been seconded, we'll adjourn the meeting. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, that motion passes unanimously. Brian?
Take us home.
Take care, everybody. Have a great.
Good night, everybody.
Be safe.